We called the order of the regular meeting of the West Valley City Council. I apologize personally for starting a little late today. We're dealing with a lot of issues today in our city and some exciting ones tonight as well. And we're pleased to see so many visitors and welcome them here with us in our council meeting. By way of roll call, let's let the men show that all members of the council are present. And tonight it's Councilmember Tom Hoon's turn to lead us in this opening ceremony.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that very much. I would like to invite all of you to stand up with me to do a blessed objection.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Thank you. We have the minutes of March 26th. Well, first of all, in special recognition, so we have any scouts with us today? All right. We'd like to invite the senior patrol leader or head boy from that scout group to come up to the microphone and introduce himself and trip these away.
I'm Jackson Olshewski and I'm from Troop 741. We live in like West Valley City, like right on the border of West Valley and Magna. And we go to Matheson Junior High and Orchard Elementary. And I recognized Don Christensen. He was the vice principal there a few years ago. And-
And you weren't in my office too much, were you?
No.[124.14][124.14](laughing) And we have a lot of scouts in our group, like 15.
Wow. Well, welcome. Thank you. So the rest are with him or are they with a different group?
Yeah. Four of us and then the adult are, we're all together.
Well, it is a big group. Welcome. Thank you. We had 12 boy scouts in their Eagle Scout rank in our city last month, and we hope that all of you will be on that list someday because we see a dozen or more each month roll through. So keep up the great work.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. And we have the minutes. Item 5 tonight, council, the minutes of March 26th to be considered.
Move for approval of the minutes of our regular meeting on March 26th.
Second.
Okay. Thank you both. Any discussion there? All in favor of approving the minute? Say aye.
Aye.
The minutes stand approved. Twice a year, we do something very special in these chambers with our English language achievement awards. And this is going on three years now, where we have been recognizing that the great immigrants from all over the world who come to our community who complete an English class. And West Valley City is Utah's most ethnically diverse city with 45% ethnic minorities and 31% speak a language other than English at home. And so as your mayor and as council, we talked to a lot in the neighborhood and they said, you know, we like our new neighbors, but we wish that speak English more. And as we talk to people who are new to this country, they say, we want to learn English because it gives us opportunities with jobs and we can help our children with their homework and it just creates a lot of opportunities. So it became a priority of this council to encourage people who come to this country to learn English as quickly as possible. And so we are very honored to honor you today, the people who have completed English courses in the past few months. And so how we do this is we have a, we have our microphone here and we invite all the English language learners to stand off to this side and then come up one by one and tell us your name and what country you're from. And then maybe file off this side. And then at the end, after everyone goes, we'll come together for a group photograph. Following our group photograph, we have certificates for each of you out in the foyer. So could those who have completed an English class who are being on our site, please stand up?
(inaudible)
Great, welcome. And we encourage you to come here by Councilman Vincent.
(inaudible)
Okay. And tell us your name and what country you're from.
Hello, everybody. My name is Laura Desmetanzos. I am from Mexico City.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Anna and I'm from Mexico City.
Hi, my name is Pablo Corona. I am from Mexico. My country is Mexico, but I was born in Guadalajara, Jalisco. I am 66 years old. I have lived here for almost 50 years.
Welcome. Congratulations. (inaudible)
Hello, my name is Marcelino Rodriguez. I'm from Mexico, Acapulco, Devero. Thank you.
You're welcome. First, sir? You can stand.
Hello, I am Graciela Sanchez. I am from Paraguay and I'm very happy I'm here in United States. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tang. I'm from Vietnam. I just left here two years ago.
Thank you. Well, let's, let's have you all come back in the front here for a photograph. And let's give them a round of applause. (applause) And if we could shake your hand too while you're out? You just move around the dais shaking hands. This, this program by my count has recognized now over 500 residents of our city from over 20 different countries. And we, some months we have larger groups and smaller groups, but all of them are making a difference by trying to integrate the best they can with our community and by learning English to better help their, their family and their society. I might add, we, this is not an English-only program. We encourage people to learn other languages. So you scouts, I hope you study language in school. My daughter's taking Spanish and I learn Chinese. My wife learned Portuguese. So learning other languages is important in our global world, but here in Utah, here in the United States, we speak English as a common language. And applaud our immigrant friends for learning English. They've gone off to get their certificates, but council, do you have anything you'd like to add? Okay, then we will go to the- Oh, did you have something?
I would just say that I'm always pleased every time that we have this presentation and know that learning English is a hard thing and it always warms my heart to see the people that are willing and wanting to be our neighbors and integrated and learning that language and that we can all communicate with each other no matter our origins.
Great, thank you. We also have a proclamation tonight regarding National Service Recognition Day in West Valley City. And I just came from Salt Lake County where Mayor McAdams read a similar one. So this is a widespread effort. And Councilor Don Christensen will read that today on our behalf.
Thank you, Mayor. A proclamation recognizing April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges. And whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and Senior Corps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps members and Senior Corps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, Mayor Mike Winder and the City Council of West Valley City, do hereby proclaim April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
Great, thank you. We do appreciate those many people who do serve. We come to item 7 tonight, which is our comment period. And first part of that is the public comment period where anyone in the public is welcome to come and say whatever they would like. This is not a time for back and forth dialogue or debate with the council or staff or mayor, but it's certainly a time for us, selected officials and city staff to hear what's on your mind. Our rules ask that each person that comes to the comment period states their name and address for our minutes and that they do not exceed five minutes. We've had one person sign up to speak and there may be others, but the first person who has signed up today is Mr. Phil Conder. Bill?
Thank you, Mayor Winder, Council. My name is Phil Conder and my address is 4709 West Delta Park Circle. I've been a citizen of West Valley City for more than 20 years. I love this city and the community. I raised my family here and as a member of the Planning Commission, I have given a significant amount of time over the past decade in promoting West Valley City and helping create a community that we can all be proud of. It is very disconcerting to me that so much positive that is happening in West Valley City can be offset by actions of our police department. With several high-profile issues recently, our image is taking a beating. Some might say that the criticisms are unfair or that there's more to the story that the police can't tell. My personal experience sadly tells me otherwise. My personal interaction with West Valley City Police tells me that there are systemic problems in the West Valley City Police Department and the problems are condoned at the highest levels. I personally had West Valley City Police Officers tell me that they were going to file a report against me and indicate that I did and said things that I did not do nor did I say. True to their word, they did just that. Luckily for me, I had the entire encounter recorded. I figured that I would file a citizen complaint and the department would listen to the recordings and things would get resolved. After months of patiently waiting for Internal Affairs to review and adjudicate my complaint, Acting Chief Anita Schwimmer told me that the substantive things that were in, that were wrong in the report did not warrant correction. I then talked to City Manager Wayne Pyle. His comments to me can be summed up with the flippant, "Mistakes are made, so sue us." I have come to realize that our police department culture protects not only mistakes, but willful falsification by police officers. I care about my community too much to sit by when I had seen it firsthand. I and many others have lost confidence in our police force. As Mayor Winder just told the media minutes ago, as elected officials, it's your duty to root out corruption and fix processes. Changes need to be made to restore positive image and to protect the many good officers that are part of the force. I feel it is my duty as a citizen to call for the resignation or the removal of Acting Police Chief Schwimmer and the City Manager, Wayne Pyle. I make this difficult request so that our community can be an even better place to live. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Conder. He's the one that signed up. Is there anyone else who's come to speak tonight? Please state your name and address for our-
Sure. My name is Brett Rossen. I'm General Counsel for the Utah Fraternal Order of Police. My law firm is at 15 West South Timble, Salt Lake City. And I'm here today to address the PSRB, Public Safety Review Board, and the suggestion by the council that there be some changes compared to that. And I don't have a strong reaction about most of the changes, but one I want to address with you, and that is the suggestion that a police officer, a line officer, would be removed from the PSRB. In my practice, and to give you a quick background with respect to the Fraternal Order of Police, nationally, we're an organization that has more than 350,000 police officers. I represent the Utah State Lodge, and the State Lodge has many hundreds of police officers that I represent from time to time. In trying to understand the people that I represent, I did something that my colleagues felt perhaps was a little unusual. And I went to police academy and I took it a step further and I actually became a police officer. I can tell you that for me, I have the greatest respect for the people that I represent. And I could not have imagined, without going through the training and without becoming a law enforcement officer, I could not have imagined how difficult the job truly is. In order to do that job, you're expected to be a fighter and a protector and a psychologist. You're expected to be an event planner and a communication specialist. You're expected to do these things and to do it sometimes without a whole lot of thank you. And you're expected to do it for very little in return oftentimes. I understand there are a lot of issues that are perhaps plaguing the city at this time. The thing that I would urge the council, that I would suggest to you, is to reconsider the, the concept of removing a police officer from this PSRB. There is a lot of context that has to be provided, at least by a police advisor. And I think that the best way, in my experience, the best way to accommodate that is to continue to allow a line officer to be involved in that review process. I also would say that in light of the changes, in light of the recommendation to make some changes at this time, I need to speak briefly on behalf of Detective Sean Cowley and to say to you that in light of the fact that there is a transition period here and in light of the fact that the Federal Bureau of Investigation is doing an investigation here on the Neighborhood Narcotics Unit, that it would be premature to, to take action against this detective at this time and to review his case before such a time as this third party, this second set of eyes, the Federal Bureau of Investigation completes their investigation and provides information in a public setting. In that regard, I'm also, I'm here today with Attorney Lindsey Jarvis, who has a more direct statement concerning her client, Detective Cowley.
Thank you, Mr. Rossen.
Members of the council, my name is Lindsey Jarvis. I am an attorney in the area, private attorney practice with the Law Firm of Allen Easton. Our address is 8813 South Redwood Road in West Jordan. I actually started my legal career with West Valley City. I did a four-month internship with the city and prosecuted on behalf of the city for almost five years. In my time with the city, I became obviously very close with the officers and I became very well aware of the expectations that these officers are set forward with. What's concerning me at this point in time is obviously we are dealing with a situation where an officer was basically put in a position where he had to fire his weapon. And as a result of that situation, this case has gone downhill as far as it could possibly go. What's most concerning to me is that on April 3rd of 2013, the West Valley City Police Department made a statement to the media indicating that they were going to enroll the members of the FBI with the intent to conduct an independent review, to provide some transparency, to restore public trust, and most importantly, to take the pressures off of the investigators who are currently conducting the investigation in order to get a fair and accurate understanding of what's taking place. 24 hours later, I arrived here with my client, Sean Cowley, and I was told that the West Valley City Police Department, through Mr. Quinlan, is recommending that my client be subject for termination. More troubling than that is that he is supposed to, his file is supposed to be sent to the PSRB this coming Thursday. Obviously with issues associated with the PSRB being revamped, I am very concerned about that happening. I'm also very concerned that members of the Neighborhood Narcotics Unit were responsible for conducting the audit of the Neighborhood Narcotics Unit, which resulted in the FBI being called in. I cannot confirm this, but I can tell you that I was contacted by the Salt Lake Tribune just minutes ago and they told me that they, the United States Attorney's Office is dismissing eight more cases, not involving necessarily my client, but the Neighborhood Narcotics Unit as a whole. The reason that I'm here is to encourage you to tell the police department to do the right thing, which is to allow the FBI to come in and do the investigation into Sean Cowley and Sean Cowley's internal activities. Second, I ask that if this is going to go to the PSRB, that we wait until this is revamped. There is quite frankly, no rush in the city to get this stuff done. We waited five months patiently and cooperatively to provide the information associated with the shooting and we're asking that that now be given back in return. I beg of you, based on your own information, which is to provide the transparency and to do things now, now is the time, to start doing things in the, the way that it is supposed to be done, to move the city forward and to progress, which would be to allow an independent board, a board that you are choosing, to come in and make these decisions based on an independent investigation, which is conducted by the FBI that has all of the information, not just about my client, but also about the Neighborhood Narcotics Unit and the customs that my client has been exposed to before making a recommendation to terminate him.
Thank you, Ms. Jarvis. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak today in our comment period? Okay, then we'll go to item 7B, which is our City Manager comments. Mr. Pyle, is there anything you'd like to comment on? Any of the matters brought up today or anything else on your mind?
Thanks, Mayor. Yeah, I'll just make a couple of short comments. First, in response to the two attorneys over here representing some issues as they had to do with Mr. Cowley. First, just wanted to mention that we as a staff and administration greatly appreciate the Fraternal Order of Police and the availability and potential for council that allows that our officers have that are in, sometimes find themselves in the situation of alleged or potential wrongdoing or discipline. And we're thankful that those participants through their membership in the FOP can get access to that help. Having said that, I also just wanted to make a little bit of a commentary for the process itself and what's going on. And just note that whenever any officer or other employee for that matter that is subject to civil service rules comes up for any kind of potential discipline of any nature, there are multiple levels of investigation, recommendation, review before any kind of decision is made. And I can assure you that no decision has been made in the case of Mr. Cowley as, has been previously stated. That process is currently underway. It still has a number of levels to include. Ms. Jarvis mentioned one of those being the PSRB. And we of course, as administration, often struggle with the fact that for some entities, for example, a number of the media outlets have had the question throughout the process of the investigation, why does this take so long to do? Why is it, why are there so many steps to the process and why has a decision not been made? For other entities, such as often the council for representing these parties, there can never be enough time, enough time to consider all the things, the evidence that would like to bring to the investigation. As we're considering all of those angles, all those interests, what we can do best to make sure that those interests are served and adjust and addressing due process way is to make sure that we follow our process quite simply. And we will do that. The other comment I wanted to make about the PSRB, at least from a recommendation standpoint, is although the council, as initiated by the mayor, asked us to make some recommendations as to how we could change the setup and the function of the PSRB, that in no way implies that within the scope of how PSRB was originally set up, designed, and created, that they aren't functioning correctly within that scope. The recommendations that the council has asked us to come up with, in fact, it'd probably be a better way to term that would be alternatives for consideration because the council isn't and hasn't made any decisions and in fact are looking at those now as what we might do. But those recommendations would change the scope overall of the PSRB, which would be fine. There's no problem with that. But that should not be interpreted as implying that there are problems currently with how the PSRB is functioning. The PSRB was functioning in a specific way. It's functioning in that way correctly and there's no need to lengthen out that process any further as far as consideration. So I'll just close my comments and again to that is just to end saying we, once again, we appreciate the fact that our officers, and that's obviously a tradition and a right within our country here, that you're able to secure representation when you have issues that are going on and we're glad that they do so. And if I can just make a quick and short comment in response to Mr. Conder's comments previously. Just wanted to make clear that his complaints were reviewed. As he mentioned, I think he mentioned, he had actually made a tape recording of the incident in which he had some question, a problem with how our officers responded. I, out of courtesy, not having any responsibility or actual participation in that process, because of our relationship and, and at his request, reviewed that tape and also agreed to meet with him and speak with him on a couple of occasions. I afforded him every courtesy to do that and certainly was sensitive to the deep and troubling personal issues that he has going on in his life right now. And because of that, was very concerned and wanted to see if I could help resolve that a little bit. I make that comment just to say that I reviewed his issues and responded to him with every courtesy and I think to sum up two conversations that we had across a number of months that involved quite amount of time in terms of sort of too bad, you'll get a lawyer, it's patently unfair and incorrect. Having said that, I just wanted to make sure that it's, it's clear to use a council that once again, from a process standpoint, his complaints were reviewed by Internal Affairs at multiple levels and by a number of people. And I concur for the record with the decision and the recommendation that Acting Chief Schwimmer made. That's all, have Mayor.
Thank you. Seven City City Council comments. Members of council, anything you'd like to comment on tonight? Well, I have one, but it's completely unrelated to everything else we've heard tonight. But before I share that one, just a quick question for the City Manager. Who does decide when something goes before the PSRB in our current process? Who determines the timeline or what?
I'm going to refer that question to Chief Schwimmer.
Actually, every citizen complaint that we have goes in front of the PSRB. We have two types of complaints that we receive. One would be a more formal complaint and that would be one that is investigated by Internal Affairs at the request of the citizen and is then reviewed in full by the Professional Standards Review Board. They also do receive a summary of the more informal complaints where the complainant has just requested that a supervisor speak to an officer about an issue and they review those summaries and then if they feel that there's more information that they need- those summaries, and then if they feel that there's more information that they need regarding those, they can do so.
Okay, thank you. And just by way of timeline, the City Manager has presented the recommendations that we asked for today, and we've determined that two weeks from now we'll have on our study meeting agenda an opportunity as elected officials to discuss that, on what our next steps are, and that gives us some time to read through this and continue our own research and hear from our bosses, the constituents, and we look forward to seeing where this process goes. On a much lighter note, I just wanted to give kudos from the microphone to a West Valley City resident. Many of you know Brian Beatty, who's a wonderful artist in our community. Is he still on our Arts Council?
He is not.
Yeah, he has served different committees before. He was chosen this year by the American Egg Board to carve the official White House Easter Egg that was presented by the American Egg Board on April 1 of this month to First Lady Michelle Obama in the Rose Garden as part of the White House Easter Egg Roll. I thought it was pretty cool that a West Valley resident had that on it this year, and I talked to him via email and know what he sent out, and just thought I would read that into the record today so that you don't have some good work by a West Valley resident with the White House Easter Egg Roll this year.
Mayor, I'd just add on to that. A friend that, you know, went to elementary and high school, went to, attended the Easter Egg Roll, and got the Facebook message of, oh, do you know Brian? He, you know, was at the ceremony of egg roll, and so it's good to have good ambassadors with artistic talent in our community and that you deserve, so thanks for bringing that.
All right, we come to item number eight tonight, which is our resolutions. Mr. Pyle, if you could please introduce the first one, Resolution 13-51.
Thank you, sir. This resolution would authorize us to have Louis Young Robertson of Birmingham perform for us a capital facilities plan. There would be a contracted consultant to do this, and the amount of this project would be just under $40,000.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, any questions on this one, or in motion?
Mayor, I comment that we'll go into a motion. We've had a longstanding relationship with the folks at Louis Young Robertson of Birmingham, and it's good to incorporate their help and to try and to get a long-term plan for the city as we look at what our needs are and with our growth, and so be a good partnership and look forward to see what the report comes out of it. And so with that, I would move for approval of Resolution 13-51.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any discussion to this motion?
Mayor, just to kind of go on with what Councilman Ruston said, I think for a long time, we have known that we have capital projects that we've not been able to address financially, whether it be a new fire station, or public works buildings, or parks buildings, whatever it might be, and I think this is a good step moving forward to help put a process in place to help us look forward to meeting those obligations.
Right, any other comments? Okay, then I'll call the question. All in favor of approving Resolution 13-51, say aye.
Aye.
Appears that's unanimous. And for the sake of you scouts, if we move through these resolutions rather quickly, it's because every week, every Tuesday at 4:30, we have in the adjacent room a study meeting where we go over all the next week's agenda items and get different presentations and things. And so all the things we discussed tonight, go down, we've had the chance to ponder about for at least one week, so if we move rather quickly, that's often right. A Resolution 13-52, Mr. Pyle.
Thank you, sir. This would authorize execution of a right-of-way contract between the city and Deseret Title Holdings Corporation. This is for property that's located at 6511 West and 6200 South, and would be paid for with $206,000 of corridor preservation fund money from the state.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, what's your pleasure on this one?
Move for approval of Resolution 13-52.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion in the motion?
I guess to say, as Councilman Vincent brought up, you know, fire station. A lot of times we do, when we do road work, it's to alleviate traffic or something like that, but this road will really be, you know, not only something for, to travel and get around the city, but it'll be a great help for public safety as well as for some of our economic development teams, and so, you know, this is an important project and one more step forward.
Great, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor of 13-52, say aye.
Aye.
That also appears to be unanimous. 13-53, Mr. Pyle.
Thanks, sir. So in addition to the resolution that was just authorized, we have another right-of-way contract to execute at the council's desire with the same entity, Deseret Title Holdings Corporation. This is the same project, but it's for a much smaller parcel, 3,309 square feet, and is valued at $9,600, which would also come out of corridor preservation fund.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, before I make the motion, just so the scouts understand, we're talking about a road, 6200 South, that would connect the, we'll back this highway, you want to, 111, to the rest of the city, so that you can move east-west, and for you guys that live right there on the border of Magna, that's another opportunity for you to go south on, and then east on this road to get to other areas, so. Move for approval of 13-53.
Second.
Thank you both. Any discussion of that motion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That also passes unanimously. We come to item nine tonight, which is a motion for executive session. Someone was mentioning maybe one regarding employee competency. Maybe I dreamt it. Okay, no need for an executive session, and we come to item 10, which is to adjourn. Before I do so, I just want to mention the council that we also, or to the scouts, that we also sit as the city's redevelopment agency, and so we'll have a brief meeting of that as we adjourn the City Council meeting.
Call or the redevelopment special meeting. Note that in the roll call that all are present and that we've had an opening ceremony. We have one resolution. Mr. Pyle?
Thanks, sir. We have a resolution that would allow execution of a real estate purchase agreement with Midland Enterprises. They are the owner of a parcel of commercial property at 2797 West and 3500 South, or more descriptively, right there on the corner of Market Street and 35 South, across from the Embassy Suites Hotel. We're proposing purchasing this and paying for it at RDA funds in the amount of $430,000 plus closing costs.
Any question or motion?
Mr. Carroll, what's the acreage on this one?
Let's see. It's not on the issued paper, and I don't remember. Nicole, do you remember?
Yes, sir. Point 325 acres.
And what's presently there?
Nothing. It's bacon.
Okay, so it's just a piece of the parking lot there in front of the Downers Street.
Yeah.
With that good input, Mr. Carroll, move for approval.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion to the motion? Call or vote. All in favor?
Aye.
She carries. I'll adjourn this meeting.